I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mr. Hong? Mrs. Lacks?
Here.
Mrs. Reese? Mr. Seeler? Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Winston? President Becker?
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions or videotaped or later broadcasts, individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Hope everyone's having a good summer. It's going fast. We'll start off tonight with superintendent report. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. Last evening, along with President Becker and Mr. Sizmar, I had the pleasure of attending the East Brunswick Police Department's promotion and swearing-in ceremony held at Hammershold Middle School. English-language learners celebrated their accomplishments learned at the ESL Summer Academy at our cultural celebration on July 26th. They shared their gains in social studies and math at the secondary level and science at the elementary level with parents, grandparents, siblings, and administrators. The Hammershold Summer Academy allowed students the opportunity to sharpen their academic skills in a hands-on, project-based learning environment. This year, students researched Mars, designed solar-powered rovers, and planned a community on Mars, including ways to obtain oxygen, water, and food. Through the use of green screen technology, students were transported to Mars and shared what life was like living on the red planet. The integration of reading, writing, and mathematics in this project made students forget they were even learning. The summer early learning and kindergarten readiness academies are enjoying a fun-filled summer. The programs focused on easing the academic slide that can happen over the summer while enjoying summer activities and themes geared toward social and cognitive development. Themes included community helpers, space, farm, sports, ocean, and circus. If you are planning to use the community programs before and after-school programs, and these include early morning, after-school kids, and encore programs starting from the first day of school, we are requesting you register your child by August 15th so all the appropriate coordination can be completed before the beginning of school. Again, if you plan to use any of our before or after-school care programs on the first day of school, August 15th is the deadline for completing forms. Community Programs is excited to offer many new as well as popular established enrichment programs, including tennis, little doctors, 3D printing, elementary cooking, acting, basketball, coding with esports, art, advanced robotics, magic, and junior master chef, and some more, including the fall enrichment session, included in the fall enrichment session. Tryouts for fall sports, grades nine through 12, will take place at East Brunswick High School during the month of August. Please check our website for specific dates and times. Tryouts for eighth-grade football will take place on Tuesday, August 20th, at East Brunswick High School. For information about upcoming student orientations and back-to-school nights, please check our online calendar of events and activities, which is accessible on the district website. The Calendar tab is at the far right at the top of the homepage. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. And now, we'd like to welcome Dr. Richard Grip, who has just traveled a few miles to come and talk to us tonight and present the findings of his demographic study report. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a five-hours-and-15-minute drive, and I did not expect that. Yes, I'm coming from Vermont, in case you're wondering.
Are you going back tonight?
No.
Oh, gosh.
No, I stay and leave in the morning. Yeah, it's just a little too far. The report itself, if you had the opportunity to look at it, is 100-plus pages, and I'm going to try to do my due diligence to give the report what I think it's a time, amount of time that need to be presented. I didn't want to cut it off in a 15-minute presentation, so I think it's going to take about 25 to 30 minutes. I hope that's okay with everyone, but I want to get into it right away and just say that if you wouldn't mind holding on to your questions to the very end, this way I can perhaps answer them as we go along. So, just a little bit about my company. It's called statistical forecasting. Actually, I'm rooted in the New Jersey area. Actually, I was a student teacher here in 1991 in the physics department in East Brunswick High School, so it's sort of a reunion homecoming every time I come back here. But my company was formed in 1998. This is the only type of work we do. It's called school demography, which is working with school districts, helping them out with projecting enrollments. Done 150-so districts approximately in the state, but we've expanded into different areas right now. So, down in Virginia a lot, doing the New York City public schools since the 2006 year, which is the largest school district in the country, of course. So, as I said, I am local in the sense of in the area. I went to a school at Rutgers a few times and got my doctorate at the Graduate School of Ed in educational statistics and measurement. Most of us wind up working for the College Board and ETS as a psychometrician. That's really what I'm trained to do, but my dissertation was in how to forecast enrollments for school districts using multiple regression techniques. And that's how I got started in this. Presented numerous places around the country and the world, actually, and I've written a lot of journal articles. I testify in a lot of cases in New Jersey as an expert witness in school demography for school districts that want to separate their sending-receiving relationships from each other. As you know, you probably just cannot walk up, if you don't like your partner, and go somewhere else. You have to go through the courts, and I always testify to racial impact and demographic impact. So, the study looks at projecting enrollments for a five-year period. Now, I presented here a number of years ago. This is not the first time I've worked with your district. Just by show of hands, how many people were here the last time I presented? Okay, so some of you, I do recognize some faces as well, so some of this might be new to some of you, but we only project for a five-year projection period because the state of New Jersey says after five years, we start have to forecasting kids who have not been born yet. If you think about it, if you're going to try to project for, say, the 2025 year, which is year seven in a projection period, that would be kids who have been born around 2020 if they're going to enter kindergarten in 2025. Of course, that's a very difficult thing to do is to project births, so the state says five years is enough, and that's what we stick to in the studies. So, I also looked at your historical enrollments. I computed student yields by housing type for the township, which means how many students come out of different types of housing, whether it be apartments, townhouses, detached, single-family homes? What's the purpose of that? Well, you have a lot of new housing planned in the township, and we're trying to get a handle on how many new kids would come out of those different types of housing stock. Another thing that was done in this study was geocoding students. That means taking a student's address and pinning them onto a map using a mapping software program to see where they live in the 13, 14-year, five-years ago and currently, see if there's any changes in the relative concentrations of where people live. And then, we projected enrollments on something called a housing turnover analysis. It's a completely independent analysis that projects enrollments using homes rather than students, so we'll get into that a little bit later. So, this is the, so let's see if my pointer works. Yes, it does. So, this is the historical information from the Census Bureau for East Brunswick Township, and this is the 2010 year, which is the most recent year of the census. Now, I can tell you that we do have a census, obviously, coming up in 2020, but there is an estimate for 2017, and East Brunswick Township is just shy of 49,000. And if you look to the right of this vertical line here where it says projected, it's assumed to go up to around 54-plus in 2040, and that's not a projection that I came up with. That's a projection from the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, which is a third-party organization which tries to project populations and employment statistics for places around the state. So, just a little bit of a snapshot, if you can see what I'm doing here, I'm more or less giving you an overview of the township first before I get into the schools. It's always good to have a little bit of an idea what's going on. First of all, the community is changing. It's becoming more racially diverse. The statistics that you see up there are from a combination of things, the 2010 census and something called the 2013-17 ACS. That's the American Community Survey. So, 70% white approximately in 2010. It was about 77% white in 2000. So, it's definitely shifting more toward Asians, as you can see, 23% Asians in 2010. A little bit older than the median age in New Jersey. One-third of the population is foreign-born, which I always find interesting because about 22% in New Jersey is foreign-born, so you're higher than the state average. India and China are the two largest sources of countries with foreign-born. You're a very educated community, as you can see, compared to the state, and you have a high income compared to the state median as well. There's a lot of housing units here, more than 17,000. 80% of them are one-unit homes, which means either single-family, attached, or detached. Only 15% are renter-occupied. The state's in the 30s in terms of the percentage, and the median value of an owner-occupied unit is just shy of 400,000, which I thought is kind of a bargain compared to North Jersey. I used to live in Kendall Park in South Brunswick, so I am familiar with Middlesex County quite well. So, this is, you probably can't see that from where you are if you have the PowerPoint printed out in front of you. This is just a map of the township with all the schools pinned on the map. This is the elementary attendance area or zones of all the eight elementary schools. And what's interesting here, if you actually look, you can actually see there are some zones that are not contiguous. You can see this pink one right here, which has spots up here and here, and there's a red section here that belongs to this one. So, that happens over time. Sometimes, if an apartment complex comes online and we need to bring students into a particular school that has the room. So, let's talk about your enrollment. You know, like I said, I've been working with you for the last five years. I saw the time when enrollment was declining precipitously in this school district, and times are changing. The enrollment back in October, and the reason I have an October date up there is because as a school district, you report your enrollment figures to the state on a census day, more or less. It's always around October the 15th unless it falls on a weekend. So, that's the enrollment as of the 18, 19 year back in October, it was 81, 84. I looked at the enrollment for a 10-year period, going back to the 9, 10 year when it was 87, 38, so you lost more than 550 students in that 10-year period. Enrollment decreased through the 16, 17 year before it reversed trend, and you've gained more than 250 students just in the last two years. So, we use something called the cohort-survival ratio method to project enrollments. I'll talk about that in a moment. This is just a graph of the PK to 12 enrollment of the district. Just follow the line. You can see declining in this area, and then, just in this last two years, we see that increase in enrollment. But the one graph, if you're going to look at anything all night without falling asleep on me, this is the one to look at. And this is the breakdown of the enrollments for the last 10 years by elementary, middle, junior high, and high school. Now, the really, I'm not going to go into too much, but you see down here in the bottom. Just look at the one on the top. This is the elementary enrollment right here, and you can see the elementary enrollment over time went down to this bottoming-out point right about here, and then, the last four years has gone up. And I can tell you, just being in the field for almost 20 years, that when we see, what happens at the elementary level dictates what happens at the other levels, because eventually, those students are going to move through into the middle, the junior high, and the high school levels. So, if you see an increase of about 300 students here in the elementary level, those students are going to move upwards and cause gains at the upper levels as well. So, real quickly, the methodology used is something called the cohort-survival ratio method. I'm not going to get into too much detail about it. It's been around for 50, 60 years. Department of Ed has endorsed it. Basically, what we do is we compute what's called a survival ratio from one grade to the next, and what that means is, or progression ratio, because hopefully, no one dies, is if we have 100 first graders in the 17, 18 year, and they're going to become second graders in the 18, 19 year, if we only get 95 of them instead of 100, the survival rate or the percentage that advance is 95 over 100 or .95. If you see values that are below 1, you're losing students usually to outward migration. If it's above 1, you're gaining students due to inward migration. So, you're computing this for all the grade progressions, K to 1, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, including birth to kindergarten. So, there's 13 possible ratios. We then compute an average of those ratios for each grade because there could be some anomalies, some outliers, and we use the average ratio on your most current enrollment to project enrollment forward. What's interesting is that 12 of your 13 average ratios were above 1, which means that you have a lot of net inward migration coming into this district. Okay? More people coming in than going out, and that's one of the reasons why your enrollment is going up. You do have a phenomenon here called negative kindergarten replacement. It's when we compare your outgoing 12th graders to the incoming kindergarteners, unless you have a half-day K program, where we then compare it to the first-grade class because a lot of parents enroll elsewhere and then bring them into the first grade for the first time. So, in the last 10 years, you did switch from a half-day to a full-day according to my records in September 2012. So, in the last 10 years, I did look at the negative kindergarten first-grade replacement, and you had negative replacement all nine years. What is it? It's when the number of students leaving the district graduating is greater than what's coming in. Okay? So, if you have 500 students graduating as seniors and you only have 400 students coming in as kindergarten students, you're down 100 students out of the gate before you even begin the year. Okay? That's called negative kindergarten replacement. The last five years, you lost an average of 259 students. That's usually due to smaller kindergarten cohorts, usually due to smaller birth counts. So, here's the value of the first-grade replacement that I just, or kindergarten first-grade replacement I just mentioned. They're all negative. This is a cool slide. This is the kindergarten first-grade replacement paired up with a total enrollment change, which is in blue, and you notice how the value in blue is not as large in the negatives as the kindergarten replacement, and sometimes, it's actually in the positives. What does that mean? Well, it means that the inward migration in the other grades in the district, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, so on and so forth, is overcoming entirely, in some cases, when it's above the axis, or partially offsetting the negative kindergarten replacement. So, in three of those years, you've had total offset of the negative kindergarten replacement due to inward migration from the other grades. Birth counts. Births are used to project kindergarten students in our work five years later, and they've declined up to a point, you can see almost 100 fewer births from 2006 to 2010, but they've appeared to stabilize. In the last report that I did for you, I saw all this happening and actually did project an increase in enrollment. So, due to this phenomenon, also with the inward migration, everything seems to be coming exactly the way I've kind of forecasted. But the birth count has stabilized, and I also obtained the birth counts from the state, not just for the township, but by census blocks. Census block are these tiny little areas that make up census tracts, and then, they make up the township, and I was able to get it by block so then, I can aggregate it by your attendance area, so I can figure how many births happen in each zone. So, here's what it is for the whole entire township. What you see in red over here is what's called the birth-to-kindergarten survival ratio after full-day kindergarten. So, let me show you here. You have 429 births in 2004. Five years later, you have 396 kindergarten students. That is a B to K ratio of .923, 396 over 429. There are less than 1 up here. This is when you had a half-day program because people were going elsewhere for kindergarten, some people, not everybody, but as soon as you switched to a full-day, look what happened here in red. Okay? Now, why is it so significantly greater than 1, particularly in the last year? 1.457 because you had this gigantic kindergarten count this year of 513 students, the most you've had since you switched to full-day K. It's because not only are people who live here having their kids, people are mooing here after they have their kids in other communities. Why? It's your school district. When I was here in 1991 as a student teacher, it was an excellent school district. I'm sure you're just as good or better, and that reputation is a reason why you have this inward migration into the district. It's a good problem to have because I work with districts where this value for birth to K is so low, it's somewhere around .5 or .6, where people do not want to go to the school. So, you have an excellent school system. You should really be proud of that. So, there's the historical birth counts. You could just see over time, it was declining in this area, but stabilized, as you can see, in the last few years. You can't really see too much here. This is just the births broken down by zone, but what's really interesting here is if you look at, this is the births for 2004 to 2017. So, in red down here, Memorial's had the most births total in the last 13 years, Bound Monroe the fewest. But you can see, other than Bound Monroe, they're fairly similar, which is really good distribution of births across the different zones. There are some unknown births, which just means that the state knows that the woman has residence, the birth mother, has residence in East Brunswick, but they just don't know exactly where her address is within the township. So, those were redistributed into the zones for projecting purposes. So, these are the births by attendance area back in 2004. I'm just going to just run through some pictures here. You can see what's changed and what's not. So, the greatest back in 2004 was in Memorial. The darkest blue is the greatest number of births. So, fast-forward to 2017, and I'll just toggle back and forth, and you can see that really no one, I'm using the same exact scale so you can see, but there's really a loss of births between 2017 and 2004, which is expected. Another thing I looked at was your enrollment by race. The race in the report was actually shown by school. I looked at the race for every single school. What was the major race? Looked at all the different trends for a five-year period from the 13, 14 year to the 18, 19 year. You can see here that in, five years ago, whites are the major race at 56% and Asians at 32. Fast-forward five years, and the white population is down to about 51%, and all the other populations have gained accordingly. Asians are the second-largest at 34%. I also looked at your economically disadvantaged population, which is nothing more than we call free or reduced lunch population. So, this is taking the district's entire number of students that are economically in disadvantage and saying, where are they in the district? And as you might imagine, well, the biggest school you have in the district is the high school, so one-quarter of them are up at the high school. But at the elementary level, the greatest number are over at Irwin. Fast-forward five years later, again, the high school has the most amount of disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged students, and Chittick actually has the most at the elementary level. So, here's looking at a graph of the economically disadvantaged by school. So, what this is, is the within-school percentage of kids who are economically disadvantaged. So, if I have 100 students in a school and 20 students are economically disadvantaged, the percentage of economically disadvantaged is 20% in that school. So, look at this graph from 13, 14. You can see that Irwin had the highest percentage of over 20%, which is in dark blue. As the colors get lighter, it's less, like Warrensdorfer, I believe, is the least in terms of economically disadvantaged. And then, you fast-forward, and you see how many more schools picked up in terms of economically disadvantaged in five-year period? I believe, if I counted correctly, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 schools of the elementary schools have economically disadvantaged percentages now over 20%.
When you're showing us elementary, are you comparing elementary to elementary only in that pool, or are you saying Warrensdorfer is compared to all 11 schools?
No, this is just within the eight schools.
So, you're just elementary?
Yeah, yeah, strictly elementary schools, yeah. Okay, this is just a list of all the East Brunswick housing developments that are in the pipeline to be built. Since I did a study recently for you a couple of years ago, there's some up there that have been completed, others that were denied, withdrawn, so on and so forth. To make a long story short, there's about 400 new housing units that are either under construction or about to be approved in the new housing pipeline, and that does not include the redevelopment projects along Route 18. I'll get to them in a moment. Okay, here they are. Since my last report, nothing really much has happened in terms of knowing the bedroom distribution, knowing what type of units they're going to be, whether they're going to be starting construction anytime soon. They were not able to give me anything new in terms of information they had about a year and a half ago, but there's somewhere around 1,200-plus units that are expected right along the 18 corridor in these former shopping plazas. So, to figure out how many students are going to come out of both the redevelopment projects and the other pipeline projects, the 400 homes I just mentioned, what I did was I joined the East Brunswick Property Address Database, which is downloadable from the state, with your student address database, which I received from your district. And what we were able to do is find out, this was a painstaking process, looking at how many students come out of detached, single-family homes, condos, and apartments. You can see, that's the yield for the different types of homes up there. A little over 1 for a single family, a half a student for a townhouse condo, and apartments of .29. .5 for a townhouse, in my experience, is kind of high. It's usually around .35. So, you have a little bit higher than what I normally would see. This is a list of all the developments that I tracked via internet research and by marrying and joining databases. What it shows is development on the left, the year it was built, the bedroom distribution, how many units, how many kids are in each of those units by grade distribution, like PK to 5, 6 to 7, 8, 9, and then, 10 to 12. But what's interesting was, since I did work for you five years ago, I compared the yields in the last two columns over here from the 13, 14 study with the 18, 19 study. Some of the yields changed a lot. Others really were pretty constant, but what you do look at the bottom here is that the overall yield has changed in the township from .41 just five years ago to .50 five years later, which is interesting. You don't normally see much change in student yields over time, but we're seeing that here. I also did the same analysis for apartments, and there's really not, these are large-scale apartments. We're not talking about four-unit apartment building on Main Street or something like that. These are the real big ones. So, Kensington Place, as you know, is the new one, and that was just built two years ago, and that has a really small student yield of .15 compared to the others, like Cranberry Crossing's almost near half of a kid, and Taylor Gardens, which are more of these garden-apartment-type complexes. But again, the 13, 14 year, if you compare, actually, the yield went down from .32 to .29 in the township, and you might say, well, why is that? I'll tell you why. It's Kensington Place. They are distorting the overall yield in the township because the yield in Kensington is much lower than the others. So, how many students can we expect? Well, from the first big table I showed you where there were 400 housing units, approximately 228 children are what we're projecting, and I did take those new students and adjusted your enrollment projections accordingly in the zones that those housing units would occur accordingly. I also did a rough, 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 and I put it underlined and bold there, estimate of the number of children from the redevelopment projects because in my world, we need to know two things. We need to know what type of housing it's going to be. All we know is it's going to be multifamily. We don't know if it's apartments. We don't know if it's townhouses, condos, stacks. We don't know. We also don't know the bedroom distributions. Of course, a one-bedroom would yield much, much less instead of a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So, if we knew all that, we might be able to refine our numbers a little better. So, for the redevelopment projects, I'm assuming somewhere between 25 and 186 children. And you might say, well, why are there such a small, or not small, such a large variation? Well, because when I had some discussions with the government officials in East Brunswick, their belief is that these developments along the 18 corridor are going to be occupied by millennials and Gen Z, with Gen Z are people born after 1995. And there's, with the two bus depots that are supposed to be anchoring all these different projects, it's supposed to provide transportation to the city and not have too many children. Will that happen? Who knows? But if we use what's called a transit-oriented development- But if we use what's called a transit-oriented development multiplier or student yield from the state of New Jersey, those have really, really, really tiny yields. Because if they're near a train station or a bus station, it isn't really going to be occupied by families with kids. And if we use that yield, it's around point oh-two, that's where you get the twenty-five children. But I'll be honest with you, I don't believe that's going to happen. You're too good of a district to just have point oh-two. Some people are going to sneak into those apartments, if that's what they are, because they want to get their kids in here. And it's their way into the district, if, depends upon what the rent prices are, of course. I used a yield of Kensington Place, which is point one-five, to get the one-hundred-and-eighty-six children. I think it's going to be somewhere of a yield between point one-zero and point one-five, if I had a guess. And the reason, I've also done some work for C-Caucus up in North Jersey. They have a big apartment complex right next to it, the train station there, Exchange Junction, or the Exchange, you may have seen it. Their yield's around point one-five, point one-seven. I think that's kind of where you're going to be. Okay, so I did adjust the housing, the enrollment projections based on the proposed housing, the four hundred units, but not the proposed housing from the redevelopment. It's just too hazy, we don't really know even when it's going to happen. So just keep in mind, it's going to happen at some point. So remember I talked about that birth-to-kindergarten ratio in the few moments ago, that was one-point-four-five? Here's why I think it's up so high. In the last four years, your home sales have kind of gone nuts, which is right here. You had this big crash right around here with the banking and mortgage crisis, you remember, two thousand eight, two thousand nine? But it's been steadily going up. There's only two ways that you can get your birth-to-kindergarten ratio that high above one. You either have a family moving in that buys a new home, or they're going to buy a resale. Your community, I checked the number of COs that have been for newly-built homes in the last five years. You haven't had that many, because you're fairly built out. So how are they getting in here? Most of them are coming in, I think, toward home resales. Of course, it could be migration to apartments, but I have a feeling it's highly due to this number right there. So let's take a look at your projections. There again, for a five-year period, I did two sets. A baseline, which just does not take into account any of the new housing we talked about, and an adjusted one, which does take into the housing, but not the redevelopment. Either way, you're looking at growth. The baseline projection's about eighty-seven-hundred students, the adjusted-for-housing growth, eighty-nine-hundred students. Big, big numbers compared to where you were just a few years ago, which was under eight thousand. So the last part, the second-to-last part of the study, I'm just going to whip through this. This just shows you where the students are living by census block. The darker the color in terms reds and oranges, where the greatest number of students are. But since all census blocks aren't the same size, we want to make it on an equal playing field. We divide it by the blocks area, which is called the density, that really finds out where the most number of students are. Again, reds and oranges, and you can see, this is in the eighteen-nineteen year. It's kind of right up the gut, right up the gut of the township is where the most amount of students are. And student yield by census block, this is just showing the greatest number of students per housing unit where they are in the township. Again, reds and oranges, and you can't probably see, but there's a red blotch right over there where the greatest number is. So the very last study that we did, the really, really last analysis, I should say, is the housing turnover piece. And it's a completely independent analysis, which uses houses and not students to project enrollments. And I put this in red up there. We don't use this to, for facility planning or staffing. It's really an independent analysis, completely independent from the cohort-survivor ratio method. Use three inputs. We have the housing turnover rates by length of ownership, which means, how many home sales do we have for homes at different lengths of ownership? So a home that's been owned two years may sell, three percent of the homes may sell. A home that's been sold, that's been owned ten years, may only one percent of the homes will sell. So that's one of our inputs. How many homes we have at each length of ownership is an input. And the number of students per housing unit, or the yield by length of ownership, is the third. So I'm going to explain this a little quickly and explain what we're doing. So again, I use parcel-level data from the state to track each home through its life cycle, which means until it's sold again. So the data had, the database was sale dates, sale prices, the year the home was built, so on and so forth. I did this turnover rate analysis for both the detached, single-family homes and for townhouses condominiums. I don't normally do that, because you have such a large townhouse condo population, I thought it'd be nice to pull them out and do them separately. We only had sales data for a forty-five-year period, from the nineteen seventy-three year up through twenty eighteen, ending in twenty eighteen. And the game plan here is to follow each year's cohort of homes, beginning in nineteen seventy-three, to see when they sell. So I'll give you an example, so you can understand what I'm talking about. So say you have a home that was built in sixty-five, and it had three sale dates, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, and ninety-five. It actually is part of three separate cohorts, the eighty-seven, the eighty-nine, and ninety-five cohorts. In the first case, in nineteen eighty-seven, the length of ownership is only two years. In nineteen eighty-nine, it's a six-year length of ownership. And when it's in the nineteen ninety-five cohort, it's currently owned twenty-three years, that's up to twenty eighteen. And you might say, well, isn't there another length of ownership from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen eighty-seven? And the reason we cannot count that is because we only have sale data from seventy-three on. It could have been sold in sixty-eight or sixty-nine, but we don't know. So we can't count the years prior to nineteen seventy-three as a length of ownership year. So again, I do a lot of these studies around the state. This is really what's showing, this is showing your weighted-average turnover rates for detached, single-family homes by length of ownership. So on the X-axis here, this is the number of years by length of ownership. Zero all the way up to forty-three, which is forty, my math here, forty-five. Zero would be nineteen seventy-three, so forty-five's up to twenty eighteen. But what you see is that really, it doesn't really matter too much how old, how many years the home has been owned. There's only about a one or two percent of the homes at each length of ownership that is selling. That is not normal, what I see. I usually see a big peak in this area in five years of ownership, maybe about a six percent of the homes selling, and then it just drops off. Maybe a lot of people like to stay in their homes in this township. Maybe they don't move out as many other people do in other communities. So this is how many homes you have at each length of ownership for single-family homes. You can see, most of them are in the lower lengths of ownership, maybe only zero, one, or two years. You also have a lot of people, well, not that many people that have owned their homes like forty years. There's potentially a lot of people way out here that have owned their homes at least since nineteen seventy-three. But I didn't put that in there, because it would skew the end, because there are quite a few. This is just showing the yields by detached, single-family home. And this is interesting, because not every single-family home has the same amount of kids. If you have a home that hasn't been owned that much, the probability is you're going to have a lot of kids. So here, this one that I've got my pointer on, is showing around one-point-two kids per home if the home is owned six years. As you get further and further up with ownership, the number of kids in the homes steadily decreases because they've graduated out of the district. So there shouldn't be too many. But we usually want to see that the most of the number of kids are in that zero to twelve, thirteen years of ownership of a home. So the methodology is really simple. We're taking the current length of homeownership distribution, which I just showed you, and the historical turnover rates by ownership to either advance a home to one more year of ownership, or if there's going to be sold, and return it back to zero years of ownership. And the number of homes at each length of ownership is then multiplied by the student yield at each length of ownership, which I just showed you. So once we do that, that yields us the number of students in the detached, single-family homes. I also did the distribution for townhouses and condos. I'm not showing them up there with the pictures, because I think we'd be just here all night. We then assume that the students in apartments that are in the district are going to be constant through the five-year projection period, as well as students in mixed-use properties. And we then add the three together, actually four, single-family, townhouses, apartments, and mixed-use to get your total enrollment. And what I found is that your enrollment would increase by about a hundred students over the five-year period if we control for all the variables, like new housing. So if you just had housing turnover in this community, you're likely to increase a little bit. But nowhere is near as much as I showed earlier in the report due to the cohort-survivor ratio method, your birth rates, inward migration, things like that. This is just controlling all the variables and looking at housing turnover. So to end, and as a little bit of a summary. Your enrollments are projected to increase at the end of the five-year projection period, and most of the increase is at the elementary level. The largest entering kindergarten class in twenty eighteen-nineteen in the last seven or eight years was five-hundred-and-thirteen students. That's another reason due to the increase. And that's the largest since switching to full-day K in the twelve-thirteen year. You have strong inward migration of families with children under the age of five here. And that's evident due to the strong home sales and the high birth-to-kindergarten ratios. And I said it up there, it's also very common in excellent school districts. I work with a bunch of districts where I actually see the ratios over two, if you can believe that. Nearly more than four hundred housing units approximately coming online in the future, not including the redevelopment. And we do need to keep a look at what that redevelopment projects are going to be looking like in the near future. Because when they are constructed, I would assume that your enrollment is going to even be higher than what I've shown here tonight. How much? It could be a couple hundred students. I don't expect it's going to be a huge difference because of that smaller count that I would expect out of a community like their design. So with that, I will take questions. Yes, sir?
Hi. Excellent presentation.
Based on Kensington, I see where you're at with that number, and you're saying the point one-five is high for the type of development it is. But I believe it's at about seventy-five percent occupancy. Is that four hundred based on the number of units?
It's right, it's on the total.
So that would drive it, if we kept it the same, to about a point two-oh? Which, from what you're teaching us, seems to be, is that correct? Would that be?
The problem is, we never get a hundred percent occupancy of these places. I mean, we'll probably get higher than seventy-five.
The other ones are pretty close.
Yeah.
I mean Cranberry, Royal Gardens, Taylor, Windmore, it's, they're near capacity, all our other units. So if that was driven to capacity, like I said, I don't want to predict or do your job here, but you're saying one-five is on the higher end of scale for a unit of that type.
Right.
But realistically, unless that other twenty-five percent is filled with zero kids, it's going to be even higher than that. So then that carries in. To me, yeah, to me, it just seems like it's, we're at the very high end, from what you're teaching us, of these type of units by the highway there.
Given its location, I would suspect it would have been lower. And that's, and that's what, you know, I get nervous when I come talking to boards in this situation, because we have to use data from around the state, we look at a lot of different things, but there's always exceptions. And the big exception for you is the quality of the school district. It changes everything. I work with West Windsor, Plainsboro, they're another one. Okay, everybody wants to get into that district. So when you have that kind of thing, it can change all the numbers that we know from the state and from historic, and just throw them out the window. But I feel pretty comfortable that it's going to be somewhere around that point one-five number going forward for the redevelopments, just because I just, from my knowledge of lots of different developments in towns, I think you're going to be in that ballpark.
But that's high?
Yes.
From what you're teaching us, that's, we're at the higher end of that?
For TOD, that's high, yeah.
Okay.
That's definitely high.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question. You were talking about turnover rates for homes sold, the townhomes, right? But it was only till two thousand two?
Yeah, the sale data, it's just what we had available, yeah. I don't have the graphs here for that. This is just the single-family home data for that. But the townhomes, for whatever reason, the database is a little different from the state.
Do you project anything for the townhomes for that time period? Or you weren't?
So what I did was, I did it, you're talking about the housing turnover analysis? So I did, I did exactly the same thing, and the report way in the back does show you how many students we expect at townhomes, as well as the single families, yes. Sure. Yes, sir?
So the profile of East Brunswick indicate we're getting older. The median age, two thousand thirty-nine-point-one, two thousand ten, forty-two-point-five. And the sixty-five and oh-four is increased from eleven-point-six to thirteen-point-five. So do you have any idea the median age when people buy a house, move into East Brunswick? So compare with the median age between move-in and move-out, that may be better indication about the impact of the turnover to the enrollment.
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for that, because for one thing, the census data does not tell us that. And when we have the information on the property database, it will tell us the person's name, but no biographical information. There is another dataset in the ACS called the PUMS dataset, which may actually have the age of the householder buying, but that was beyond the scope of what I looked into. But that is, it may be available, I really don't know.
Yeah, if younger people move in, that may produce more students. And if older people move in, they should produce less.
Right.
And apparently, by the profile, East Brunswick is getting older.
Well, you're going to have, you're always going to have that aging of the distribut, right. Because here's what could happen. There's some communities that I'm working with where the median age doesn't even change over a ten-year period. Where are those places? It's where they have incredible migration both in and out. Typically in Hudson County, like in Hoboken and places like that. Here, I think you have, this is more of a bedroom community. I think people stay here longer, so you are going to see a normal aging of the population. But I still believe that there's people moving in, in their thirties. I mean, that's the age where people start to have kids now, or bring them from somewhere else in tow. I mean, this is, don't forget, that's from two thousand ten. The new data is going to be coming out next year, well, it's two thousand twenty-one. We'll have the census next year, but it'll be another year before we actually get it. But I understand where you're coming from. I still think, you might have, you still can have an aging of the population, but still have the school district growing. It's still possible. Yes?
Very excellent presentation. A lot of things to think about. Going along with what Li Wu was referencing, was there any indication on any of the charts that of the developments that are fifty-five and older?
So the ones in the chart, I only put non-age-restricted developments. I left out the any age-restricted, because they shouldn't have an impact on your district. Of course, if people from the township move into them, that would free up more homes in the community, but that's a big yet.
I would think, though, that if there had been a surge in over-fifty-five developments, that that would contribute to the higher average age of people as new over-fifty-five developments are built, and if they're filled to almost capacity, that's going to increase the average age of buyer in East Brunswick.
Well, we're all getting older, so, I mean, the average age is going to increase from one census to the next, unless people move out, that's the qualifier.
It just seems to me, just from living here twenty, thirty-two years, that there's more, been more development of the over-fifty-five in the last five to ten years than there had been.
That can raise it. I mean, and again, so if it's in the last five, ten years, some of that may be captured in the census data, but that's from two thousand ten, so some of it may not.
And some of those over-fifty-five people, watch it, there might be kids and young.
Well, yeah, it's possible that they are in those, I don't.
No, when they're.
No, I'm just looking behind.
I don't look.
Oh, over-fifty-five, I'm sorry.
Was that a personal attack?
No, 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 not at all. Of course, being under-fifty-five, it wouldn't be.
It wasn't fifty-five either.
I was just curious, thank you. Anybody else? This is a tremendous amount of information, and even most of us had read the information you provided, but seeing it, the PowerPoint, hearing you talk, making new connections, as we think about this and kind of digest it, and tie it to some future planning. Can we reach out with email questions?
Sure, of course. Yes.
I know it's a lot of information, guys, but things are going to, you know, as we think about it, occur to us. Can't thank you enough for the drive.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Grub, appreciate it.
Great stuff.
As soon as I hit Route Seventeen, everything comes to a standstill.
And you still, again, you said if there's any one slide that we focus on, it would.
Yeah, and it's just because.
Historical enrollments by level.
It's a driver of, yeah, this one right there. Yeah, just because you could see that upward, it's not even, that's a pretty steep thing for three or four years, in my opinion. And when you see five-hundred-and-thirteen kindergarten kids coming in, yeah, my projection from the prior report was in the four-fifties. That was one of the problems, everything else was pretty good, except for my kindergarten count. Everything else was pretty good, except for my kindergarten count. And that's a real hard one to peg sometimes, because we really don't have any data, even from the census, for kids that are under the age of five. They have some really lousy data. That's called 1% samples, and that's such big confidence intervals that they're really not worthwhile to look at, but.
So, just to put this in reality, because we have centralized registration, I asked Karen Mandler to pull the data from the end of school, so only a couple of months. How many students have we registered since the end of school? This is gross enrollment, 232 students.
Wow.
Now, that doesn't account for the students we've lost, but those are brand-new enrolled students in East Brunswick.
Do we have a number on how many we've lost?
We will have numbers, more accurate numbers for you as we move through, you know, the 15th. I think we have some numbers too tonight to share with you. But the, even tonight, we have open registration the night of every single board meeting from now until the opening of school, and there are appointments filled tonight until 8:00, 8:30, for people that is, you know, are coming in to enroll their children. And we just stand in the hallway sometimes and watch people come in with the number of children they have, as Dr. Gripp said, the number of children in tow, and it's interesting to watch, yeah.
With that, how many, how many, what's the average number of children per, in what you're seeing in real numbers as opposed to data-driven?
I'm just going to guesstimate that probably sometimes two to four is the range, I think. That's pretty accurate. Three, I think, sometimes is a typical subset, typical scenario.
Are, when you're getting the higher numbers of four or more, are you finding there's two sets of parents in the house?
No.
Okay.
No. But we are finding that parents are, and it alludes to what Dr. Gripp said, the migration in, parents are making decisions at a critical time in their student's life to say, okay, now before third grade, we want to move into East Brunswick. And so, they've been somewhere else, and now they're moving in. And that, it seems to be around that first, second, third grade, but kindergarten enrollment too has spiked in the past, and we're anticipating that through the month of August. Last year in August alone, we enrolled 300 kindergartners, just in one month.
Did one of the charts, and forgive me for asking this, she went over all of them, but did one of the charts, though, the percentage of kids who start out in kindergarten and end up spending their whole 13 years here?
No, no, that would.
It's irrelevant?
Yeah, well, no, it would actually require tracking each individual student record. Yeah, so, we don't do it more in the aggregate, so I don't have data on that.
Do you have a sense, though, from working with all these numbers, if a majority of our students who start out in kindergarten do graduate 12th grade?
I couldn't tell you, because you could have two kids leave in one year, one in and, I'm sorry, one going in and one going out. The balance is, you have absolutely no idea.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's just, it's impossible to say.
Right here. I was wondering.
We would have to have that information here.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That we would track that.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I thought it was fantastic.
It was. Thank you so much.
Thanks. I'm sorry it was a little fast. I don't usually like to talk this fast.
No, you will, we, again.
I know you have a retreat.
It's an awful lot to think about, and we're going to make connections between this and a lot of other data, and you will receive questions from us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Julian knows where to find me.
Safe drive, safe drive home.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right, have a good evening.
Oh, now I get why you thought it was personal. You have.
Oh, for goodness sakes.
Okay.
I'm with you, I'll be in my 50s.
Okay. For the good of the cause of the public, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues, the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves, to allow for a fair and orderly public comment period. Individual comments are limited to five minutes to protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board?
This is, how is this, do you agenda?
I'm sorry?
Is anything on the agenda?
This is, this is a public comment for anything that you wish to comment on with regard to district. This is the opportunity.
Please come up to the microphone, and are you a student?
No, I'm actually from the Watchung Hills district.
Oh, no, that's okay. We ask people to state their name and address, but we don't ask students to give their address.
Hi, my name's Neily Trevetti. I just graduated high school this year from Watchung Hills, and I'm the co-founder of a community service project called Shared School. Me and my co-founders, we've been in public education our entire lives, and we started getting interested in how schools get rid of surplus. And we read that because of the 18A purchasing regulations, public school to public school transactions don't have to go through a bidding process. And so, we've built a free web platform where schools can either list surplus or make requests for materials and goods and services that they need, and we basically act as a broker and facilitate those. And we have currently 10 to 15 districts that are interested, and we're starting our pilot test. Our software is done, but we're trying to get schools to join our pilot test right now. Our ultimate vision is to build like a free Airbnb-type thing for schools, where public schools can communicate with other public schools through our platform and exchange goods and services. Half of our team is staying in New Jersey next year. I, myself, will be going to Stanford next year, and I'll be continuing work on this platform there. And we really want to make this a really free and powerful platform for public school collaboration. So, we'd love to work with your district to see if there's an opportunity to join our pilot test. Thank you.
Wow.
Would you mind giving your information to Ms. Atkins right here?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, lots of luck with everything. Wow, good for you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I close the public portion. I would like a motion to move tonight's agenda with the understand, the entire agenda, with the understanding that before we take a vote, anybody can ask a question on any individual item.
And let me just note the exception for a couple of things. One is that there is a corrected page that is on the dais for the personnel agenda. You have the HIB report on the table.
And the HIB report.
But I think that your motion for the agenda should exclude those other actions in the last couple of pages, as they are closed-session discussions.
Oh, absolutely, sorry, I thought that.
So, without the other actions.
Moving the agenda was up to the closed session. Without the actions after the closed session, may I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Lax?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion on any item?
Just quickly, on the facility use with the East Brunswick Police Department, I want to thank.
What page do you want, or item number?
It's item number two, under Board of Education, facilities use.
Okay.
This is the East Brunswick Police Department. Just want to thank Dr. Valeski and everybody else involved. I really appreciate, especially being a retired police officer, that we can work together with the township, and all departments in the township should work together to go forward. And you were there, and Ms. Becker was there, so it was a wonderful ceremony, and, you know, Lou, you were there too, so it was a fantastic night. And I just want to say, you know, all the townships in the department should work together at all times, so that was great to see that on the agenda. So, thank you, Dr. Valeski, and everybody else involved.
Well, thank you to the board, because, you know, this approval is, you as a board, you know, allow the use of the space, if you approve it tonight, for that swearing-in ceremony, so it just lends itself to the cooperation with the township.
I think I saw Ms. Mandler there too, helping out, and some of the other people from the district. Ms. Atkins was there, and if I missed somebody, like I said, I apologized like Frank last night, but I just think it's fantastic when the board works with the township, and that's how it should be, so, thank you very much.
Anybody else, any discussion? Okay, the secretary, please call, take a roll.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.